To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You did it. Our first order of business this evening is a special presentation. I have, in the past, reached out to the bid and invited any of the businesses that are in the village, if they would like to come and present what they do to the board as well as to the general public. And we have had one in the past, and that was Marge Pickering from across the street. It's her program of health. So this evening, we have a second. And I'm very happy to introduce Marissa Burke. And she is the owner of a new business here in the village, which is called The Pickled Paintbrush. And we had that opportunity to go in a couple of times, and just recently to go in upstairs, and I was amazed at the space that you have up there and the opportunity. So, Marissa, talk about The Pickled Paintbrush.
So as you were saying, my name is Marissa Burke, and we just opened The Pickled Paintbrush in November. We are right in the village at thirty-sixth East Main Street. We're right between Salon and Walla. I'm really excited to be part of the growth of the community here. We offer walk-in projects where people can come in and do some art projects. You don't need to have an appointment, you don't need to be part of a class, you can come in and create with us. We provide all the materials and we do all the cleanup, which is great, especially if you have little kids. And then we also have a little boutique where we offer items that encourage creativity and spark imagination. And then a lot of people are surprised to find that we have a second-floor loft studio where you can have up to forty people. We also have a playroom up there, so when people come in for classes and workshops and parties, kids can play in the playroom between projects and phases. Currently, we're offering a lot of different events for kids, from toddlers up to adults. And we're working on all of our new classes for March. All of our events are posted on our website. You can enroll in them, and like I said, you can also come in and just do walk-in projects as well.
I've been to your website, and at the party that you mentioned, I saw a birthday party, which would probably be pretty common. Bachelor and bachelorette parties, which is interesting. And baby shower.
And showers, bridal showers, baby showers. Birthdays have been especially popular for us, and we love posting up. So we've had kids as young as three celebrate with us, all the way up to teenagers.
I hope that the village and town residents are turning out in masses to come to your establishment.
Well, thank you. It was definitely a big step for us. We used to be in Fairport, so moving to Webster has brought us closer to home, and it's been a really great experience for us, so we're happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to present your business. And we wish you great success with it. And we know that you are partnering to some degree with Rock and Soul, I believe, and that's a great partnership that's going to happen. All right, well, thank you again. Okay, we will move now to our public comment. If anyone has a comment or questions they would like to address to the board, you're welcome to do so. Come up to the podium, state your name and address, and listen.
Hi, Peter Elder, how are you tonight? I just was up here, coming up here tonight to, on behalf of a couple groups that I'm involved in, who have asked me to do a couple announcements. The first was for the Historical Preservation Commission, of which I'm the chair, and we just wanted to let everybody know about our Facebook page, and hope that you would all like it. We are trying to do the best we can to update it about every other day or third day with photos, some sites of the month have been put on there. We're going to keep putting more sites of the month, because we're kind of moving backwards a little bit, so we want to make sure everybody knows what we've done. And then periodically, we're posting historical information about the village, some, much of which we've gotten from Lynn Barton, but there are other little tidbits that people give us that we're able to post as well. So if you're interested in a little more of the history of the village, this is a great place to have a good interface with that. And of course, we want to thank the village board for giving us permission to have the Facebook page in the first place, to try to get some of this information out to the public. So if you could all like it, if you're on Facebook, that'd be great. So we want to try to get as many likes as we can, so we can get that information out to as many people as we can, because our whole purpose is just to educate. And as we do events, we'll put some of those events on there as well. So there are events in May coming up for Historical Preservation Month, and we will make sure that those are well-publicized on there too, so that you, you, everyone, can come, because we'd like to see you there. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that through a variety of factors, I ended up being chair of a committee called Webster Through the Years, which has just been accepted as part of the museum through the museum board. They agreed that it would be part of the museum's structure, so I'm on the treasurer of that board, so it's been, it's been interesting. Like, anyway, this has been a years-long project. So many of you are probably aware, there's this big book, usually a blue cover, it was a softcover version too, by Esther Dunn, that was published around nineteen seventy or so. And there has been a lot of discussion over the years about updating that book. I mean, there's a lot of history between nineteen seventy and two thousand, well, we stopped this one at two thousand and fifteen, basically, but that's a lot of time. So we were like, well, we need to do this, and other people have tried, and it is a gargantuan, immense task. And it has taken a committee of people now, two and a half years, to actually work on it, the structure, but how we're going to get it out there, how we're going to make sure that, you know, it's out there in a form, people can read it, yet not do too much to it, that kind of stuff. So we did put together a site, but we have tried to use a free one. It's a Google site. It's called Webster Through the Years. So if you do sites.google.com, then type in site Webster Through the Years, probably you'll get it if you really try by just going to Google and putting Webster Through the Years, but you're more likely to get the book at this point. But again, the more people that come, the more likely it is you'll get it if you Google. So anyways, so we are posting chapters as we get them done. So right now, for instance, we've had excellent, we've had very, very good response to, from local churches on their histories. So the histories right now, in Esther Dunn's book, stop, we get about nineteen seventy, but almost every church in this community was very receptive and provided us their histories from nineteen seventy to today. So there you can see the updates on that. There's communications chapter has been updated, the transportation chapter has been updated. We're working, I'm, because it's my responsibility, I'm working on the village section, getting that updated. So we're looking at all those, anyways, we're looking at updating every chapter in the book that's relevant to today. So I would encourage you to go there if you're interested in seeing more recent history, which is now not any longer so recent in some cases. So, okay, so I do want to thank, before I leave off this though, and just say that the, again, this was a multi-year project, and there's some very dedicated volunteers that have given their time to make sure this site is off and running, and that we can get the history to you. So if you guys have any questions about any of that, it's all historical related, but it's good stuff, so. And we want to, and this site, by the way, has some possible applications for the future. So it's not just writing, we'll also probably be posting pictures as we get photos, we'll put those up there. We'll also put maps as we get those, assuming they're not copyrighted. And so we will make sure that there's some interaction with people as well. The other thing is, we're not the only ones doing the writing. Okay, so a lot of the church groups, for instance, have their own historians, and they were more than happy to use their efforts to update the book. So if you are a part of a group in the community, and you want to get your history up there, even if it's not in the original book, but especially if it is, we'd be more than happy to have you write it. If you email us, the email address is westerthruetheyears@gmail.com, and we will take a look at what you've written, interact with you, and then eventually, probably fairly quickly, we'll update it to the book itself. So, because this is supposed to be a combined, a combined effort, not only from our group, but also from all of you in the community that want to update us on your organization's history. Okay? All right, enjoy. I'll turn you off.
Lynn and the other two wrote a follow-up book of Webster Through the Years.
Well, it was actually more of a photo follow-up to some, and it included many of the, of the, some of the, some of the history is actually in Webster Through the Years itself. So it didn't, we're like, we really concentrated very heavily on nineteen seventy to two thousand and fifteen. So, so you're not going to get a lot of water wheels or mills, or people running around in strange-looking hats, or any sort of horses traveling through four corners or fountains that don't exist anymore. All that's for a different time. This is more the times that we probably remember and say to ourselves, oh gee, nineteen seventy doesn't seem that long ago. You know, it's getting there, it's getting there, it's almost fifty years or so. You know, and if we don't start capturing this history, we're going to lose that, and the people afterwards are going to be like, well, how come there's no photos left from nineteen seventy in the village of Webster? Our job is to try to make sure that happens.
Good.
Nice.
All right, anyways, I encourage you to go and take a look, and it will always change, because as we get more people giving us written items or photo items that we'll post, and then we'll have new items on there for you to see, so check back frequently.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, thanks for being our spokesperson.
Hello, my name's David Theor. I'm a resident of Old Sherwood Avenue in the village of Webster. This is my first time here. And we are here to just inquire about, we've noticed that there was a new business that recently moved in on Main Street, which focuses on the business of pawning. And we respect that they are a business, and that they probably met all the rules and regulations. And we just also noticed that, as well as this new business there, that there is a pizza shop, as well as a paint shop, who also have temporary, in nature, flag signs. And without getting too super-duper technical and too sign, flag, mumbo jumbo type stuff, we recognize new businesses may come to the village. This is the art shop. Sounds really interesting, by the way, in that, you know, businesses may fly temporary signs or advertisements so that they know that they have new things in store. But we're just, we're just kindly really asking that if, if the pawn shop could recognize that it's been about a hundred and twenty days since they've been in that particular spot, that they would maybe be able to take some of the flag-type signs down. There's like the chicken place, that, you know, they got the things that they kind of bring out and bring back in every night, which we find, we have no problem with, completely acceptable. It's concentrated mainly, I've noticed, in this one particular area, right around the Fair Drive, Sherwood Avenue, that spot. I don't really see it anyplace else around. The paint shop does it from time to time for sales, and they typically take their signs down in like a week. You know, they put it up, they get a big sale, it's like, you know, the sign's gone.
The pizza place has wine and beer all summer long.
Yeah, I mean, the signs, they don't really advertise sales, they are signs, you know, wine, beer.
Pizza.
Pizza, gold type things.
Exceed federal credit.
So we'll certainly concede, you know, if you want to have a monthly sale, or a quarterly sale, or something, we're just asking that, you know, if it's been ninety, ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, that please take them down. And then our other question is, and again, it relates to, and again, this particular business, and we don't want to, you know, make waves, but they do have a giant neon diamond in their window that's lit up twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Many of the bars and restaurants, I believe, have neon signs, and then when they close, they typically turn them off.
It's like two or three in the night.
Yeah, I mean, like the health, the health shop has that little, you know, but, I mean, it's like, it's like down here, and you don't, you don't really notice it, it's kind of like waist-level. But I just, we would just kind of like to maybe see if there's a way, if we could ask them to nicely respect that and, you know, consider the, consider the aspects.
The residents too.
The residents, yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, this is Donna, our neighbor, and we've been in her kitchen, and at all nights of the hours, there's basically a giant neon blue diamond.
Shining into her windows.
And we just, we also kind of like, we don't think there's a lot of people driving around being like, oh, there's a pawn shop, they got to stop. Like, once you know it's there, like, you know it's there. So we just like to express our concern for that.
Well, you rejected it. Perfect guy right here.
Our other concern.
Yes, our other next, our other next neighbor is Mr. Will Barney, I'm here.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no. The way our code is written, they can, we don't have anything to say, you can only apply for a temporary sign permit twice, three times, and then you're done. So they can, and they've done this, the pawn shop has come in already and renewed the sign permit, and it's sixty days each time. So each time, I tell them, you're up, I'll send them a letter, he'll come in and renew the permit, so they can have them out there. So that's the first thing. So if you want the code to change, now's the perfect time to ask. As far as the sign, the neon thing, we don't have anything on our code that says you can't have it lit, just like any other sign that's out there at the, at the edge of the road that's lit. You know, the church signs lit, you've got other business signs that are lit, they've got it in the window and everything like that. I can ask him nicely if he shut it up, and he's usually really responsive, and he'll probably do that if I ask him nicely, so I can do that. But as far as the, the signs you're asking, and I've sent letters out, they'll come in and just renew the permit.
We appreciate your effort to make sure that he's complying by the code. And, and as I said, you know, we're just, we just know that they're out there in this one particular area, whether or not there's a way to prevent that. I don't want to make more rules for people.
Sure.
Obviously, and I don't want to say that you can only fly one sign a month, or whatever, but, I mean, we, we get that there's gold, we get that there's pizza, we get that there's beer, right there. You know, the paint shop does it for a week, and they're done. And, you know, it seems like, kind of, kind of like it might be a nice, nice thing.
Sure. And the other thing you have to take into consideration, we're a residential district that owns a business district, so they're allowed to have the signs. And that's part of the problem. We run into that all the time, and people get upset when things like this happen, which is fine, I understand. But also, they have a right, it's a business, to operate and to have the signs and everything, because it's in the code. So, but again, I could talk to them and see if they can leak it, the light down at night.
Well, perhaps, Will, being a resident who probably sees those signs and that neon diamond, maybe you can ask him personally as well, not just as a member of the board.
A neighbor.
As a neighbor.
As a neighbor.
Actually, no, I'd rather ask him as a code.
That, that was our only concern for tonight.
Is there a way to change code, how long they can fly for versus like taking them down for a period of time?
Yeah, we can review that, absolutely.
Because I think it would be beneficial, because they seem to stay out, exceeds, had them out for a long time. They have one, Martinez takes it down, seems like just for the winter, because of the snow piling, but the pawn shop's been up since it's opened, so.
Yeah, when I work for the town, and I do co-enforcement sometimes for the town, when I have to, all the car dealerships.
Yes.
Are always after them too, same thing. You know, have them fly. The only thing I haven't seen is like goofy thing that.
I wouldn't like that.
Yeah, but this is residential.
Will, how many times does the pawn shop have their, you know?
Their place.
So they only get three, right?
They have three? The, the code doesn't limit the amount.
That's what I was saying, yeah, let's take a look at the code.
I think we should.
Yep.
We appreciate your time and effort in this matter, and also respecting what we have to offer and tell you, so thank you very much.
You haven't offered us anything.
Well, no, I just complained this whole time. Thank you for listening to our complaints. We appreciate it.
I offered, I offered that, I'm looking at the picture up there on how beautiful the village was, and how conducive, and the colors blended, and you don't, and I understand that, I'm, I'm already aware that you can't tell someone, or if it's grandfathered in, that they can have a blue building, and then a pink building, and then a green. It's just so sad to me to see this, and then see what we have, and we're, her shop is how beautiful, she's gone, it's beautifully done, and that whole area with the money that's going in there, and how wonderful it is, and then you see these, it's, it's sad to see that this is happening. When you look at that and say, well, yeah, they could have, they could have had flags and all that, but they had maybe a more, I don't know if the codes were different, I don't know what, but.
I don't think they had codes back then.
Well, that's probably okay, because the codes.
We didn't have a colored code, and I put one yellow.
But the codes that don't mean much to me, if, if what Will is saying, and I know that it's true, that they can have it for a hundred and twenty days, they can want to renew it when it's done. So basically, we have, right now, unless the codes are changed, we have to see those flags waving around our neighborhood, which is residential. Now, is the car industry where the car, where the dealerships are, is that residential?
It's commercial. But where the flags are, it's, it's commercial. That's a commercial district.
But I, you're making, you were making reference to where the dealerships are.
Yeah.
What is that? That's commercial too. So the respect comes for me as, as being in the village, which is my choice to live there, maybe before all that was happening, that it just seems like there's a fine line there. We look at the other part of it, and it's beautiful, and then where we are, it's getting...
Well, you know what? What we could do, I'm sorry to interrupt you there, is I would almost recommend that we not have those type of flags in the village. I mean, the town does it, for whatever reason, but, I mean, that's...
We just have to reduce it to hold, and let's take a little good look at it.
I think we should do that. Yes.
Yeah, but we, you know, we'll do that. And then as far as the colors, I put a whole color code together for the business district.
Yeah, of course you did.
And Will has it, he's a building inspector.
However, it's, it's voluntary suggestion right now.
But it's voluntary, we can't demand that they do it.
Well, that's encouraging. Thank you.
But at least when, you know, when you have new businesses come in, at least, because they have to get permission and everything, so they have to see Will, and I, I want to make sure that they see that at the same time they're getting their permit, so they know how we feel. We don't want any more of that, some of the things that we have.
Some of her bullet things.
Or Swiss chalais.
As for like the neon signs, it's not like a signage of their business, it's just a signage of advertisement. I don't know if there's a way, because the signage for the church is a, is the business, lit-up business sign, just like, you know, the vape shop has their lit-up sign, and everybody has their like little company sign. And I believe the, the pawn shop does have a sign, I don't think it's lit up yet, but they do have a company sign. It's more of an advertisement sign. And I, I think that there's a fine line between plastering your windows, because I think there's at least two in their windows, if not three neon signs, that they plastered their windows with these neon signs lit up all night, and it's not advertising a business name, it's advertising their business all through the night, you know? So I, I respect the church being lit up, and I respect the, the pawn shop sign being lit up for their name, but I guess I don't totally respect the neon advertisement all night long. And I know some other towns do have rules and regulations about lit-up signs and colors in them, and having a time that they have to be out at night.
Which ones?
I know the town of Aupin does. My cousin has a, a lit-up sign out front, and he has to close, he has to put that, because it's kind of like a TV screen type sign, where you can scroll through things. He has to have it off by nine o'clock with just the time and the temperature. So.
Yeah.
What time does the pawn shop close?
Anybody know? I think, I, I saw, I saw a car out there before I walked over here today, but I, I mean, I would guess nine o'clock, and I would think nine maybe.
And I had a picture.
Village of Geneseo has a strict policy on signs. You can't even flash them. And they have to be off when business is off, and they have a see the stars policy at night, where lights can't be so bright that you can't see the stars.
We're not, we're not proposing something extreme, so we don't, we don't want to impact everybody, because we were just, we're really kind in asking that, if you have a giant blue diamond in your window, then when you're closed and your door's locked, that you turn it off.
Yep.
I think that's a very acceptable request. We're trying to be PC and playful about it, and also that when you have a giant sign that says gold coins, beer, and pizza, that they don't stay up for, you know, more than, ninety days after you open or something, and then, you know, maybe a few times a year. Please and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We actually looked at and talked about sign revision. I have that in the meeting, so if you're going to bring it up again.
Word, Kevin. Yeah.
Thank you. And there was, there has been other requests, and I would call them complaints about the flag, but you're not the first for being published about it. Anybody else? Then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on to village board decisions. Our first item of business is the approval of our village board meeting minutes from February fourteenth, that has been in the packet, you've had a chance to look it over. And is there anything, any comment? If not, I would ask for a motion to accept the minutes, who the minutes are written by the board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
The second item is a resolution to approve budget modifications. There are two of them. One is from the general fund. That bud, budget modification is coming from contingency, line AA dot one nine nine zero dot four hundred, and that is six hundred dollars on contingency. We have not touched that yet, but it is moving to line AA dot seven five five zero dot four hundred, celebrations contractual. And what this involves is an opportunity that was presented to the village to purchase a podium to be used at various events. You know, typically, we get a podium for Veterans Day and for nine eleven, and we have been renting that. And Taylor, I think, the tailor, is going out of business, and it was available for a cost that was substantially less than anyone. So it will last us quite a while, and so that is what that is about. So can I have a motion to approve that budget modification?
I'll make that one.
I'll say.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Second is for super fund budget modifications. This is the line GG dot eighty-one thirty dot four forty-nine, sludge hauling landfill, and it is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and did not show up on this particular copy because Christina changed the line assignment from the initial one, and when it did, it just left off to seven fifty, but it was on the original. And this is moving to GG dot eighty-one thirty point four six zero, engineering and professional services, seven hundred and fifty dollars, result of invoices from La Bella for engineering work related to STP. I have a motion to accept that transfer.
I'll make that one.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have a look at the claims and warrants, and resolution to approve them. See, the format is a little bit different than you see in the past, and we're moving now to the new... And we're moving now to the new format, using the new software. I think it looks pretty good.
I like the way you've put that.
And we had an opportunity to look through them. Any particular questions?
I already asked Jake off the record, so.
Okay.
How many looks good?
Anyone else have a question on any of them?
I looked through it.
And I would ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, we have the financial statements for January. If you haven't looked through them, at this particular point, I would suggest that you do look through them and look through them in relation to what I have forwarded to everybody regarding the budget as we take this on Tuesday at the budget for two years. So, we can see where we are with this one and what we originally budgeted and the appropriations change that I've made in the temperatures at this particular point. Okay? So, this is pretty much the information that I have sent to you. Next, we move to item five. And that is a resolution to set the election date for Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. To set the polling place to be the community meeting hall right here, 29 South Avenue, West New York 14580. And the hours of polling shall be from 12:00 PM until 9:00 PM. We're a little bit early, but it doesn't hurt to be early and to set the date and the time.
Yep.
So, I can have a motion to accept the date, time for this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
And I just want to say, Peter, thank you very much for your guidance on that.
You're welcome.
And I do hope that we have a good turnout for that vote that day. Okay, next, we move, I guess, to Don. Anything that you would have for us this evening?
Only I need some direction as to what you want to do about the wireless communication facilities.
Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the update that came from Mike North and his comments? And his response basically to Verizon. He made a couple of revisions, a couple of changes. And in a couple of cases, he questioned what was their reason and what was a precedent that they may have had that he does, is not aware of. We are going to have a conference with Nikon on Tuesday. The young lady who wrote the article that's in Municipal Matters on Small Cell. It has been sent to her, this document. And they have samples, actually, that in fact, they have even worked with color group. But they have samples. But we're going to just have a conference with her and get an opinion from her. Correct?
Yeah, because that's what it is.
It's gonna be 2:30.
2:30?
Yeah, after 2:30.
That you reveal after 1:00 or something.
2:30.
Tuesday.
When, what day?
Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday.
So, what I would, what I would recommend, because we will need, because of the revisions, there are revisions in it from the original.
Yeah.
So, we will need to go through the process again. We're going to approve the seeker, we will have to have a public hearing again. And then we can bring it up for a vote. But I would like it to be locked down this time, so that when we bring it, it's ready to go. We are also probably the trendsetters here in Monroe County in terms of villages with this.
It's a blind hearing, yeah.
And so, we are, we're sort of on the edge of this.
Ed, or did you get any more information, you were gonna try to get some?
I wasn't able to get anything that they can put officially.
Okay.
I'm trying to get something that can be worded officially and not get the company in trouble.
Okay.
I know information, but it might not be information that publicly want to put out there. So, I'm working on it. I'm waiting for someone to get back to me.
Hey, Don, quick question. Only two board members to be able to go to that special meeting, is that correct? Does that, it's more than that?
More on the.
Well, it's only if you're gonna, if you're gonna transact business. If you're just gonna listen, I don't think it constitutes an official meeting. I was a little confused. The woman said Nikon generally does not comment on specific, you know, village or city, local laws or ordinances or whatever. So, I'm not exactly sure what she's gonna do, but.
I don't, my guess is she'll just look at it and say, oh, it looks pretty good to me, do what you want.
Because at first she said that she, it seemed like she was saying she was gonna give us her input and now it's not true.
Well, because she says they don't have the resources. If they start doing it for one village or city, it's like all they would do.
Yeah.
So.
So, are we just, that we just like getting her in?
Well, I don't know what.
Well, I don't know. She wrote, she wrote the article, so she may be looking at what we are doing in light of that.
She wants to know our experiences with Verizon and with anybody and give us her input based on what she wrote in the article.
Okay, but then that's just discussion.
I'll be.
And actually.
And I don't know how you're setting this up. If you're not actually in the same room, you know, if you're doing a conference call.
She's not getting to me, I'm just.
Well, no, I'm talking about them, you know, I don't know, you know. I'm not coming to the village at 2:30 on Tuesday for this. So, if you want me, someone's gotta call my office now. If Al's at work or, you know, you don't. If you're all not in the same room.
Don't do it.
Well, no, it's not, it's not a meeting then, it's not subject to the open meetings law.
Right.
Because you can't, you're not gonna take votes, you're not gonna do, you're basically just gonna listen. And maybe ask questions, but it's not, it's not really a public meeting.
It's just a discussion.
Right.
It's a body of change like that.
Yeah.
We might also ask if they have a sample, or a sample block. I think that was mentioned, that they do have.
Wait.
Wait, so they might.
If we might those back to you, sir.
They might be able to send that as well and look around.
Okay.
But there's certain, there's certain basic things you gotta decide, you know? Verizon's preference, and I'm sure the others cellular carriers' preferences. You know, it's all, it's all gonna be these small, these small wireless facilities, you know? So, their preference is, is to have those approved simply by a building permit and not have to come before a board. And the way ours is written, they gotta come before this board. And, you know, and if they're gonna put them in every 500 feet, there, eventually, there's gonna be lots of these applications. And is this board equipped to, yeah, to act on them within 60 days of them submitting an application? So, that means you gotta have, you know, gotta have a meeting, you know, a village board meeting and a decision and all that.
Well, we meet, we're not 60 days, we meet four to six times, so.
Look, that's fine with me, whichever way you want to do it.
And I know that was one of the same choices.
It's your choice on the same.
We talked about it, instead of going through the planning board, et cetera, coming to the village board because we were able to act much more quickly. All right, well, that will be something that will be continued to be discussed. But I would like to hear what she has to say on Tuesday and maybe anything else.
Good evening. Again, nothing earth shattering on the report, except positively, Jake and I completed the next round for the CDVG grant, the Community Development Block grant. That's gone through, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. We expect a good response because they had a mandatory meeting for the CDVG. Jake and I went to and there are very few municipalities that have the meeting. So, if there may be more money available, I don't know, we're crossing our fingers and hoping. But all of that's been taken care of, so that's one more thing off the table. Been working on my stormwater management plan. Every year I have to do that and update it. And I've been working through just to get it all filed and organized and everything. So, if we ever go through an audit, heaven forbid, I've got all my ducks in a row, so. And town of Webster went through an audit. It did very well, because Joe does a good job over there. Joe Hertz, the highway superintendent, but that's good. So, and then just, this is the time of year when all my year end reports are due. Land use reports, the census report that you get the note for every year as well. Asking me if I completed that, yes, it's done. My Department of State stuff, so it's all been mainly administrative stuff this past month, so.
I had a, I had a call, email actually, regarding property between 250 and the nerve point that runs off of state. There were two houses there, 122, 126, or whatever the number five. 22 and 26, stick with me.
Okay.
Complaint was things in the front yard and, you know, household goods, all those kind of things that are. I don't know if there is anything that is not code compliant, but I'll look into it.
Looking into that, I would appreciate it. I didn't want to see the phone call on that, so. I know one house is being worked on in that area that I had talked to the person working on it and sent a letter out and it got, got taken care of the first time, so I don't know what's going on now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Jake?
I think you've wasted all my time, so I haven't really.
Oh, please. You can't say yes unless it's 25 words.
For, for Jake's mind.
Okay, sure.
Still filming. Still filming.
Thank you, Jake. I didn't mean Russian.
Jake, what, can, could people, what happened with the island?
Yeah.
Can you just, can you tell, can you tell people?
There's not a police report except from the.
No, I know, but can you give us the Reader Digest version, what happened over there?
Me, it's, no, I don't, I don't. Yes, and the park, and the park was struck. The, uh, someone made a poor decision, I would argue. And drove on the wrong side of the island where he went up on the curb, hit the first tree, the second tree, did a deuce of hazard over the rock and the flower garden in the center and took out the third tree on our side.
Yeah.
So, he was, I saw it on the Webster Police Facebook page today, they have the information on there. And he was arrested or was arrested and charged and released, I think, on a ticket or something, so. And we've contacted the insurance company to help them buy a tree and a tree and a tree in the side.
The weeding.
Tree in the side and how it was stoned and everything.
The weeding cherry.
Get the.
It looked like he, I said, I think he was like deuce of hazard right over the top of all the. The planter in the middle one at least, that rock, that little circle of rocks. Luckily, no one, you know, on the surface. You know, it's, laughing now because everybody's, oh, the car is totaled, I think. I, oh, every year, maybe, and it went off and then front was, we might be able to use it the plow at the start because they're nice man. Definitely lose some snow.
Well, you won't have to waste the labor to, you know, put in new weeding cherry trees or anything like that.
Well, then, yeah, we've already had a discussion.
You have.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Shoot, you didn't hear it? Did you hear it?
Did I hear it?
Yeah.
It was all the way down in Nikon. There were EMS, fire trucks, police, you name it, it was all there.
Everybody was a driver.
The drivers.
It was amazing to see that the next morning.
So, you're putting in a claim on the village for?
No, not the village insurance. No, the, the vehicle insurance for property now, yeah.
Yeah.
Did the work for you, Peter.
Well, not really.
I heard that guy from Bart's America.
Might already have a uniform.
He'll do some digging for you.
Broke ground.
Little catastrophic there.
Okay, moving on, public notice. I'd like to read this for the record. Serial bond interest payment on the bond obtained in 2012 for $1,300,000 to be made in the amount of $13,768.75 later than March 15th, 2019. This bond was issued for financing of the STP written system, the STP reconstruction and the water tank works as well. So, just a notification that the interest payment will be paid by the interest. Okay, next meeting is Tuesday, it is March 5th. We will meet at 6:00. It will be focused on the budget, so it will be a budget workshop. The next meeting, the board formally will be March 14th. And that also will begin at 6:00 with a budget workshop. And we will not be discussing the budget in our regular meeting, starting at 7:00 PM. And then March 28th will be a normal time, 7:00 or, or meeting. Okay, so again, village board workshop, March 5th, at 6:00. The village board meeting, March 14th, will begin at 6:00 with a budget workshop. And then our formal meeting starting at 7:00, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Jake about the, was there a lot of wind damage around the village during the winter? It seems to me that we, we made up pretty good.
I'm glad you asked. The, we had one tree on Sanford Street, a muskwood limb and one big pine tree. They had double meter, it came, I'm sure, when it reached up the hill, came down. Other than that, we didn't lose any trees, not a lot of, well, to the wind.
Every day high wind for the same period of time. I'm really surprised.
No one caused it.
One and a half to the wind and two to Chevy, so.
I got it, I got it.
Two trees. Yeah, we, I think, and part of it, I think, is our aggressive tree trimming schedule. You know, we trim 20% of the trees every year. And it takes all that, that, you know, that money, that winds, it lightens them up and there's less surface area. We did lose some of the oil fields, but that's it, there's not really a.
Yeah, good job.
No, no.
You can maybe get a picture up here at the Nikon.
Your job.
What was that, what was the formal week of training, wasn't it?
It's a good picture.
Some of the clerks got together and there's a picture. I don't know if you can find our clerk in that picture, should be able to. If you look second from the right.
Yeah.
Nice picture.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? If not, Jerry was going to try to make the meeting, but he probably. If not, Jerry was going to try to make the meeting, but he's probably watching on Facebook, and if anybody has, has that up, maybe he's made some comments, I don't know, but Jerry, if you have, and if you're watching, have a good evening in your meeting that was put off from Monday.
We had six viewers, we had six watchers.
We had six?
Nielsen, here we come.
All right. Well, thank you for coming, and I'd like to take a motion to adjourn the meeting, and it's now 7:51, and so...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, with favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same button.
All right.
Dunning Avenue, west, south of Dover Street, on the west side.